To the flag of the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I'm present. I believe I can barely hear. The audio is really bad. There's a feedback on it and you're like 5,000 miles away.
Can you hear me?
Nope.
Really?
Is that better?
Getting better.
Betsy Peterson?
Present. We have two trustees participating versus Zoom. No. No approval is needed pursuant to the governor's orders. First item on the agenda is the approval of the August 25th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented. I need a motion in a second. Motion trustee Bluthart. Second trustee Berman. Any discussion? And for the record, this does have the letters that were sent from the law firm with included.
Missing what?
Meeting minutes.
Missing conversation. Let's get one. Did you want to call on trustee Pierce first?
Hold on. I'm having a hard time on the feedback. We're having a little technical difficulty. It's okay. Just wait one second. We're working on the audio setting right now. Trustee Pierce, trustee Masek, is that any better?
Sounds much better to me.
I can hear now.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda, I'll go back, is the approval of the August 25th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented, which I just want to include the letters sent out by the law firms, the different authorities relating to Route 173 and Route 59. I had a motion for approval by trustee Bluthart, a second by trustee Peterson, opposite trustee Berman. The second was trustee Berman. Any discussion regarding the meeting minutes? If not, I'd ask.
Yeah, I got one if you're gonna go through the roll call.
Yes. Trustee Masek.
Okay, so the letters missing on this, you've got all of 59 to Beach Grove Road where that family was entrapped in a car. That letter's missing. We talked about that. Did we not? Yes, we did. Right in front of Heron Harbor. Do you recall that, Mayor?
Yes, I recall that. And there is a letter, an attachment to one of the letters, a report, I recall seeing about a.
See that in my, I don't see that in my booklet. All I see is 173 and 59. We also talked about Walmart Speedway, like the old Grim Road where we had a ton of accidents. That's not in the packet.
Okay, well, this is for approval of the meeting minutes, not to debate, you know, what was discussed at the meeting.
You said the letters. You said the letters were included, Mayor. All due respect, you said the letters included.
Hold on. The letters are included that were sent. If there is missing content, trustee Masek, then you can bring it up with staff or myself or the village attorney, and we can revise those letters. I will say that based on the letters that were already sent, we have had, the state of Illinois already indicate that they are going to expedite a study on both 173 and 59, and we could work through those details. Whether every single traffic incident that we've ever had on 59 or 173 is included, I don't think is the point. I think the point is that we want to get this traffic situation rectified through, through the state, and they have already indicated that they are willing to help, which the village attorneys had done in two years, in two weeks, where this has taken years from what I've heard before. And I will, again, we will put include in any supplemental letters, anything that you request within reason. But all I'm saying is the letters that were physically sent are included in the pack.
I'll do, I'm gonna, I'm gonna state my piece once again. The first letters, there is no follow-up on. First letters, I brought it up under the former mayor, the former administration. Now, you say we've had some feedback. The board hasn't got any feedback and any response of any copies of letters from staff. Now, if that does exist, I would like to have the trustees and the elected officials get copies of that. Because then we know some actions doing, is happening for the constituents that are, that are asking for relief.
Okay, and I let, I'll let the village attorney address that. I believe the correspondence was received today.
Absolutely. And again, I'd just like to remind everyone, we are here to debate the minutes and to approve or disapprove of the minutes relative to response. I spoke to the chief deputy engineer, to the first district engineer, I think that's Mr. Rios, who is his successor for Mr. Quigley, who is in the 2020 letter. He said that they are going to work to expedite a study for the properties or the roadways, the rights of way set forth in the letter. If there's any changes or expansion that they want of it, all I have to do is send out another letter. So we have been in discussion, not only with the first district, which is out of Schaumburg and covers our whole area, but also State Senator or State Representative Joyce Mason has talked to me about it. She's talked to the, actually, head of IDOT about this. So there is, whatever expansion of rights of way that you want included in a supplemental letter, please just let me know. Or even better yet, Mr. Mayor, if you're okay with it.
We talked about in the meeting.
Mayor, if you're okay with it, can we have the police chief know? And the police chief can relay that to me because it comes along, it comes off better if it comes from the police. So this letter had the statistics as set forth by the village and the locations as set forth by the village. But as I said before, after my conversation with the person in charge of this at IDOT, I am sure that if you want additional properties or rights of way expanded, they're more than happy to do it. But let me remind everyone, as the attorney for the village, we are here to debate the minutes, not the contents of the letter, but whether we're going to approve the minutes or not approve the minutes. If you want me to send a supplemental letter, I will. If you want me to call the gentleman who called me twice today to make sure that this gets moved along for the village, I'll call him tomorrow morning at night.
All due respect, we're discussing the minutes. That was discussed in the last minutes for those specific areas. So if you review what was discussed in the meeting, counsel, that was, those roads were specific to the minutes.
So should we anticipate a no vote, trustee?
Well, I'm saying we needed amendment because that was discussed. You're leaving out public safety and you're, you're, you're taking out parts of conversation from the minutes.
Excuse me, excuse me, Your Honor.
The motion on the floor is, are we approving the minutes? We are debating that. Obviously, you've talked on this point more than twice, which under Roberts' rules is your maximum amount. If you want it supplemented, we could talk about that under later business. The letter which was sent, the discussion started the day after that this was brought up. The discussions was gone on prior to the letters even being sent. We've already got a response to it. So we can always add a second letter. As I said, I'm more than happy to call at 9:00 AM. This matter has been talked about. We are here to approve the minutes as presented, trustee. Respectfully, I respect your opinion, but that's why we're here parliamentarily, right?
Your, Your Honor.
Yes, trustee Pierce.
Since you didn't ask us all individually who wanted to speak, I figured I'd wait for trustee Masek to finish. First of all, as the attorney says, we are here to debate the minutes. So my, my statement is about the minutes. I do not believe these letters belong in the minutes. I believe we should have a separate category on our agenda that says communication. That includes both incoming and outgoing communications so that it's separated out, and we can discuss those under a communications heading instead of debating what verbatim is or isn't in the minutes.
Okay, thank you, trustee Pierce. Discussion. All right, if no further discussion, I will ask for a roll call regarding approval of the minutes from the last committee of the whole meeting.
Pierce?
Aye.
Masek?
Hopefully, the minutes will get, the other letters will get sent out, so I'll prove what we got here.
Yes?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthart?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, one absent, motion carries. Next on the mayoral report, there are two acknowledgements. It's a somber week, and there are two things that we'd like to recognize this week. One is the 9/11 ceremony that is going to take place this Saturday at the Veterans Park in Oakland Knolls. The event has been organized by Deborah Rentner from Oakland Knolls, along with the association in conjunction with the village of Antioch. All of the public is invited to attend this memorial service. It begins at 11:00 AM. So again, we want to remember 9/11 this week and those that lost their lives in 9/11, but those that served protecting the country afterwards. In addition, it's suicide prevention month, week. This is a very sensitive topic to me this year. Last year on January 21st, I lost one of my best friends to suicide. So again, you know, those that have served in in wars who are struggling right now, those who are struggling from COVID, losses of jobs, you know, keep those people in mind. It, not only do they need the resources to reach out so they can avoid this tragedy, but also the families of those that have lost individuals to suicide and friends as well. So on that cheery note, we will move on to any citizens wishing to address the board. We do have a hand up. We have one gentleman present. And did you sign in, sir? Oh, there's no. It's no need. Just because we are having technical difficulties, I don't want to lose the person online, let's take the one that's on Zoom first, and then you can come up and address the board. Okay, it's, all right, Mr. Mulch. Can you hear us?
I do. I do not have anything to say tonight. I inadvertently left you. Anyhow, I don't have anything for tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you for, for joining the meeting. Sir, would you like, would you like to address the board? All right, you can come up here to the podium to the microphone, please. Can you just state your name for everybody, the record?
My name's John Draper. I live at 1061 Victoria, and I want to talk to you guys about the parking over there. I've talked to the mayor a couple of times, and I live one house away from the intersection of Hardin in Victoria. And I'd like to see the parking moved one house north of mine. And leave those, my, in front of my house and a neighbor to the south of me, have that no parking. Because when cars or delivery trucks, so many right now, turn off a Hardin, those cars parked there, they have nowhere to get out of the way if there's another car coming. And it's a hazard that way, and my wife has got a hard time getting out of our driveway if this vehicle's parked there because she can't see what's coming down the road. Each way. So. About it.
Thank you, sir. I know we have a discussion on the agenda regarding that item from the police chief, and we're gonna take your comments into consideration.
I do have a picture on my phone of Van Park in front of my neighbor's house. You can see how close it is to that intersection. If someone were to pull off the Hardin, they really have nowhere to dive over. There is a car coming. Because people don't use stop signs.
Yeah, I, after our conversation, I did have this, I believe it was discussed at the traffic calming committee, which trustee, or trustee, chief, police chief got, I will be able to speak to here for the board while we, while we debate it. We are not going to be, tonight's discussion is just for discussion purposes only, and any modifications therefore would be either sent back to the next meeting for discussion or put onto the next regular business meeting. Okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom or? Next is the regular business. The first one, which we started briefly talking about, is a discussion regarding an ordinance mending section 7-3-6 of the municipal code of Antioch regarding restricted parking. I'd ask police chief Gao Chao to address the board regarding that.
Good evening, I'm very simply stated, this was a concern that was raised by Mr. Draper, brought to the traffic calming committee for consideration, and taking, taking a look at the intersection itself, the road design and seeking assistance from Minister Keim, the engineering perspectives. We agreed that there was a need for parking restrictions, and working with the attorney, looking at the site, and then taking into considerations kind of some standard setbacks for intersection parking, recommending no parking between, recommending no parking between the two Hardin intersections, extending 30 feet beyond the intersection itself. I don't know specifically if that quite reaches Mr. Draper's house. I have to go out there and measure that out to be sure. Just looking at standard intersection design and general roadway safety standards, we felt that that would accommodate the vehicle with traffic to greater.
Thank you. Discussion, trustee Pierce.
Is this the only change we're making in this? I mean, there is a whole long list of streets covered in this document, and also, are we gonna have proper signage up?
Yes, the discussion at hand is specifically to Hardin, and as with any new ordinance, there has to be signage to regulate the parking, to inform people in the area, and this is gonna restrict parking on both sides of the roadway in that area.
Okay.
Just for clarification, I believe there is not only regarding Victoria Street, but a clause that was added for parking vehicles within 30 feet of intersection is that in position as well?
Yes.
Trustee Masek? Any discussion, trustee Masek?
Oh, none, none, none for me.
Trustee Peterson?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing. I, I drive by that little jog right there twice a day, going to work and coming home. And I've seen cars parked there, and I often say to myself, how is a school bus get through here if people are parking? And also, I agree with you 100%. Well, heaven forbid we need an ambulance or a fire truck. So, yeah, I, I agree with you.
Trustee Bluthart? Trustee Berman?
No comments.
All right, if there's no further comments, then I would ask for just to move to the next regular meeting. If there's any dissent on that, let me know now. Otherwise, thank you. We'll move this to the next regular board meeting, which will be September 22nd, so if you want to be here. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is federal COVID funding. I would ask Joy just to give us a little background regarding the federal money received by the village and the potential uses for that, those funds.
Good evening. The purpose of the letter from the attorney in the packet is to, so that you can become familiar with the eligible expenses. We did receive over 900,000 in the first tranche, and we anticipate a second tranche of the similar amounts in a few months. The reporting is, is very strict. It was a 53-page instructions on reporting. I'd, to be honest, I have not read all 53 pages. However, tonight, I'm not anticipating discussion, but that you are familiar with what those options are and how we can spend the money. Because I know in the beginning, there was a lot of confusion. This letter from our attorney clarifies it somewhat.
Thank you, and I believe we discussed, you know, talking amongst village staff, Administrator Keim, Joy, and others, you know, maybe coming up with a list of five to 10, to 10 suggested uses instead of having to debate all 53, which we could be here, you know, all, all evening. So that was kind of the next steps in this process and bringing that back to maybe the next Cow meeting for discussion on the uses of those funds.
Correct.
Yep. Discussion, trustee Pierce.
Do we have any form of idea of the amount we will be recapturing in this?
Yes, it was the 1.8 million total. However, and if you don't spend it, it goes back to the feds. And if there are municipalities who have not completed their applications, which had to be done, I believe the deadline was August, then that money will be, that would have been allotted to them will be available for use by the municipalities who did register. So it could be more, but we have to be able to justify the, that the expenses are eligible. And that's gonna be, you know, the toughest part. That's why, as the mayor said, we discuss coming back to you with recommendations for you to then discuss, you know, what you think is priority.
And I do appreciate getting a list of recommendations of what is a priority. And as I've said before, if you look under the use of funds, bullet item number two, it talks about addressing the negative economic impact caused by this. It includes harm to workers, households, small businesses, impacted industries and public sectors. I think somehow we need to find a way to help alleviate some of our property taxes, at least maybe on a one-time basis, to help residential housing and homes with the families that are in there. I think we can find a way and not just spend it on, on wish list items. That's just my input.
But I, the, the difficult, the difficulty with the, the entire process would be proving that the, that any specific expense is eligible, because they do have to submit, I think it's by the end of October or November, that what, what our proposed expenses will be. And at that point, we have to prove to the Fed that it is indeed an eligible expense.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Masek?
You know, one line item is water sewer. You know, it's been a long time since the trustee's seen parts per, parts per million, parts per billion in our water system, our infrastructure, our water systems or culverts. That would be a good program to look at, to bring, you know, what culverts, the age of our infrastructure and culverts. We get an aging infrastructure, folks, and it's our water that we're all drinking up the park. I don't know when's the last time everybody looked at the parts per billion, parts per million that we're drinking, but that would be a good thing to look at. Because with the lack of rain, you know, if we have five years of this, you gotta start looking at alternative sources. So that would be something I would like to look at. And I would like that report, because I don't, yeah, I looked for that report online, the water report. It's usually on, on the webpage, and I haven't seen it for a couple of years, posted.
Thank you. Run off by the seating here. Trustee Peterson?
I have no comment.
Trustee Bluthart?
Just a quick question. You mentioned a date that has to be sent by or goes back. You know what that date is?
It's 2024.
Trustee Berman?
No comment.
Okay, then if this, I'll ask that next committee of the whole meeting, we have a more detailed list of, you know, items that the village is earmarking. You know, I'm sure sewer water, infrastructure, those things will definitely be on that list, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the list, it's like Groundhog Day here. It's a consideration and approval of an ordinance amending title four of the municipal code of Antioch regarding mobile food vehicles, ordinance number 21-07-23. This, again, has come back several times. I know we have debated this, I won't say ad nauseam, but pretty close. And it would be my preference at this point, because this is becoming more and more of a request for people to have food trucks. They're here to stay. I would like to see some regulation, you know, we don't, at Village Hall, there's apparent, we're not, you know, really don't have teeth to require permits. They happen without permits. So I would look, like to see if we get to the point at a minimum where we have a regular permitting fee and some minimum restrictions from businesses, schools, parks, you know. I know it says 100 feet in some parts and 500 in others. You know, I would suggest that, you know, maybe we go with 100 feet on all these and see how this plays out. I imagine this is going to be an ordinance that is going to be completely tweaked over time. I suspect, and I know it's already happening, that there are going to be requests for people to put permanent food trucks out as opposed to bricks and mortar, which we're gonna have to deal with at some point. And I don't think we're gonna perfect this today, but I'd like to see us get something at the next meeting on the books so that the village can start at least having some enforcement mechanism relating to the truck. So with that being said, comments, trustee Pierce?
Um, yes, I do appreciate the need to protect our local businesses, but this is an up and coming thing. So we need to get something in place to control the food trucks, to make sure they're operating properly. Part of the, part of the ordinance, so I would like a timeline added to it to, on how the village processes the permits, because it's not fair to a truck, a vendor who's trying to get a permit if they've submitted everything we require to wait three, four weeks, as they've got people requesting for them to come in. So I'd like to see a timeline of maybe five working days as, as a baseline for what we should be issuing permits unless there's an issue.
I agree. Thank you, trustee Masek.
Well, I'm against food trucks because Amazon started the estimated sales tax, and we'll get sales tax from this. And we always complain about sales tax or downtown. And, and the one thing I thought about, you know, Clublands, when they had their, their big celebration, they use local vendors. They use the lodge for some of their food, you know. You know, we should encourage our subdivisions to cater, cater locally. You know, if you don't put a, an estimated village tax on here that comes back to the village for the food trucks like Amazon did, then it makes no sense. Amazon did it. We should be doing that because it makes no sense to, to, you know, the police are gonna have to, to, to enforce these. They're not getting paid. They're not making any money. This makes no sense. So I'd be a no vote on this unless we have an estimated sales tax.
Thank you, trustee Peterson. Thank you. Trustee Peterson.
I agree with Scott Pierce with the timeline. And I agree with you with streamlining it for a hundred feet. I'd like to see this go forward.
Trustee Bluthart.
I'll just, I agree, we need to put something in place. And I also agree with what you said, it would have to be amended this if we go along with the, if there's a new business more or less. I think we're, need to keep looking at it and updating it. But we do definitely need to get something in place.
And I agree. I think that without putting the sunset provision on this, so to speak, I think that if we, when we do get to board level and put this through, you know, I could in that, set a timeline to revisit this in six months or eight months. Once we see what starts happening in spring and summer again. Trustee Berman.
No comment.
Um, I will say, just for the record, that when there's a village event, which we have one coming up at the end of the month, whenever there's talk of food trucks coming in for anything related to the village, like a street market, we are going to make it a priority. And Mary already has to contact all of the local restaurants, businesses first and ask if they'd like to set up, you know, any type of car, taco cart, pizza vending machine. So we are trying to be proactive and are sensitive to this. Just trying to figure out, you know, evolution of this business and trying to stay ahead of it. So any, any, any dissent on at least putting this on the regular board meeting for a vote at the next meeting on the twenty-third? Okay. Thank you. Any other business for the cow meeting? All right. Entertain a motion to adjourn the cow.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Peterson, second by trustee Bluthart. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Pierce.
That'd be yes.
Can you say?
Closing the meeting?
Sorry. Closing the meeting, yep.
Yes.
Peterson? Yes.
Bluthart?
Berman?
Yes.
Five yes, one absent. Motion carries. Sure. It is seven oh five. We'll take a five-minute break. I promise to start promptly at seven-ten. And that lets, you know, anybody who wants to get up, the restroom, we'll reconvene in five minutes. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Pierce?
Present.
Trustee Maisick?
I'm here.
Trustee Peterson?
Here.
Trustee Bluthart?
Present.
Trustee Berman?
Here.
Trustee Dominique is absent, Mayor Dorton.
Present. Two trustees are attending via Zoom, which is again allowed per the governor's orders. No approval is necessary. Mayoral reports. The only thing that I'd mention, so trustees and staff can prepare is I asked staff this morning to cancel the regular board meeting and cow meeting for November twenty-fourth, which is the meeting before Thanksgiving. I know there was a meeting last year that went late into the evening. So if anybody has any concern about that, you know, let me know. But I think we only have one meeting in November. All right. So the next item, citizens wishing to address the board. Since this is a regular business meeting, there's only one opportunity during the meeting to address the board. So if anybody on Zoom wishes to do so, please click the raise hand button or indicate to us that you would like to address the board. We will continue to move along with the consent agenda. And if anybody pops up their hand, but is there anybody? Okay. Okay. Anybody in the audience? All right. Thank you. Um, we have four items on the consent agenda and we, it has been requested that we pull item number three from the agenda since the numbers have changed since last time this was presented to Mr. Garrigan. So I would ask that we, is there any other item that we would like to move from the consent agenda to the regular business agenda? Again, pulling number three for consideration at a later date.
So it's not moving down to the regular agenda. It's being pulled totally.
Being pulled completely.
Okay.
All right. So I'd take, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items one, two, and four.
I'll make them.
All right. Okay. So we have a motion by trustee Bluthart, second by trustee Peterson. Any discussion or roll call, please?
Pierce.
I.
Maisick?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthart?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero no. Motion carries. Uh, first item for the, try to get to the number. First item for consideration on the regular business agenda is consideration and approval of accounts payable as prepared by staff to the amount of three hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and ten dollars, thirteen cents. Entertain a motion in the second.
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee Berman. Any discussion regarding these items? Trustee Pierce?
No discussion, Your Honor.
Trustee Maisick?
None.
Trustee Peterson?
No discussion.
Trustee Bluthart?
None.
Trustee Berman?
No.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Pierce?
I.
Maisick?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthart?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Five yes, zero voting no. Motion carries. Next item on the regular business, again, like Groundhog Day, consideration and approval of an emergency ordinance ratifying the mayoral declaration of emergency relating to coronavirus, ordinance number twenty-one dash oh-nine dash thirty-two. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess we need a motion and a second first.
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trust.
Waiving the second reading.
Motion trustee Peterson waiving the second reading, second trustee Bluthart. Any discussion? Not roll call, please.
Pierce?
I.
Maisick?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthart?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero no. Motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of an ordinance waiving certain fees for governmental bodies and tax exempt for nonprofit organizations, ordinance number twenty-one dash nine dash thirty-three. I need a motion waiving second reading.
So moved.
Motion trustee Pierce waiving second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second trustee Peterson. Discussion trustee Pierce.
No, I think we discussed this pretty well at the committee of the whole meeting last night.
Trustee Maisick?
No, this is standard.
Trustee Peterson?
No, no.
Trustee Bluthart?
None.
Trustee Berman?
No.
Roll call, please.
Pierce?
I.
Maisick?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthart?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero voting no. Motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution accepting and approving the marketing strategy and brand guide for the village as presented, as prepared by the Altogether and Clue Group, resolution number twenty-one dash sixty-five. Entertain a motion in the second.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Pierce. Um, I don't recall if, I know we're not going through the whole discussion again. I see the representatives from the Altogether group are with us on Zoom. So if there's any discussion needed or if they, there are any questions, they're here to answer those.
Yeah, we'd just love to, you know, appreciate all the thoughtful feedback we've received to date. All of the feedback we received should be incorporated and we have loved working with you all. So if you have questions, please just let us know.
So with that, I'd open a discussion for trustee Pierce to lead. If there's any questions or discussion regarding the marketing plan.
Well, I appreciate the, as, as stated, everybody who provided input. I appreciate the group working on this. And I'm excited to see us start moving forward and maybe help polishing the image of the village and setting the foundation for future prosperity, growth, and exciting things to happen here.
Thank you. Trustee Maisick?
I think it's time to kick this off. So that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Trustee Peterson?
I would just like to say, I did talk to trustee Dominique about this and she's completely in favor of it. And what, would love to see this go forward, as would I.
Thank you. Trustee Bluthart?
No comments.
Trustee Berman?
No comments.
All right. Well, wasn't that easy, girls? Thank you for joining us.
Yeah.
And that, and we will, I'll ask for a roll call to approve a resolution number twenty-one dash sixty-five.
Pierce?
I.
Maisick?
Yes.
Yes.
Bluthart?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero voting no. Motion carries. And thank you.
Thanks, y'all. Glad to continue working with you.
Thank you. Um, well, actually, you might want to hang around one second. Well.
I will still be here.
Yeah, yeah, okay. The next one is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the village administrator to execute an agreement for the village placemaking proposal, ghosted, which is bringing history to downtown Antioch in an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars, resolution number twenty-one dash sixty-five. And ghosted may not be what you think it is. It's actually painting murals on the side of buildings for clarification. So with that, I'll take, entertain a motion in the second.
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Berman. Discussion trustee Pierce.
Um, as I look through the package, we have examples of old style murals. Does this also include any of our current businesses or we just want to do the history part?
Right now, this is focused on history. So instead of, you know, picking and choosing existing businesses to feature murals, it's focusing on historic businesses that have been in downtown Antioch.
Okay, thank you.
And for clarification, does that include some of the, like, new logos on, potentially in some of the buildings or any of the logos on those?
Yes. We talked about the, the space on Village Hall or adjacent to Village Hall doing a version of the new logo.
Thank you. Trustee Maisick?
It's not going to be anything that you drop by and someone says, because you got a lot of opinion people, that's your Facebook. That's art. That's just graffiti. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I, I live in Chicago. I see a lot of graffiti. There's definitely a difference. And this should be nothing like this. This should honor the history of this place and do so in a way that also elevates the town.
Do they spray paint it on with cans? They call it art. And, and.
Will not be spray painted. This will be hand painted by an artist.
So, so is there, what's, what's the cost to the taxpayers for, that you would see forecast for artists to come out and hand paint murals on there? And I would make a suggestion that it, that stuff goes through the historic society for stuff to go on the buildings to make, make it more downtown look.
Yeah, we are working with Ainsley and the Historic Society on, you know, old images to take inspiration from. The budget for the sign painters who specialize in painting ghost signs, which is a sign that's made to look old. They've given us an estimate based on the sizes that we've provided them is between twenty-two thousand and thirty-eight thousand.
And that's included in the proposal for the forty-seven? Is that correct?
Yes.
Then we get Laddie's gas station.
Trustee Peterson?
I have no comments from you.
Trustee Bluthart?
No comments.
Trustee Berman?
No comments.
Any follow-up? All right. If not, an entertaining roll call.
Pierce?
I.
Maisick?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthart?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero voting no. Motion carries. Last item on the regular business is consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing and providing for an installment purchase agreement for the. for the purpose of financing the cost of certain capital-related projects, and authorizing and providing for the issues of the issue of not to exceed one hundred and five thousand general obligation, limited tax debt certificates, series twenty-twenty-one. Of said, village evidencing the rights to payment under such agreement prescribing the details of the agreement certificates and providing security for the means and payment under the agreement of the certificates, ordinance number twenty-one dash oh nine dash thirty-four. That was a lot of words for a lawyer. Joy, do you have any thing to present on this? Well, first I'll take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson?
I'll second.
Waiting second reading?
Waiting second.
Motion trustee Peterson waiving second reading, second trustee Pierce waiving second reading. Thank you. Ms. McCarthy?
Thank you. So we, since twenty thirteen, we had a long relationship with PNC, and we financed all our vehicles and equipment through them. Last year, early last year, they were taken over by Huntington Bank, and they informed me that they no longer will provide financing, vehicle finance leasing. So at that time, I was in discussion with Norm from PD, and he was trying to get some, the three squads. But because of the pandemic, these squads were, were difficult for him to get, so we kind of put it on hold. And, and then he indicated to me a few months ago, maybe two months ago, that they were ready. They had the one car that was ready right now, and that was the one we purchased at the last meeting. We used cash for that, but we wanted to finance the other two vehicles that they needed. So this is what this is, to issue that certificate with Heartland Bank to purchase these spots.
Thank you. Discussion, trustee Pierce?
So this is for two Ford Expeditions fully outfitted?
Yeah.
Okay, and our, I, I know our police department is seen with having a lot of vehicles, but I also know they are on the road all the time, working hard to protect our citizens, and just from my road days and road driving and on-the-road time, I know how much wear and tear that causes on a car, so I think it's good that we're continuing to maintain a proper fleet for officers to be out there, so I encourage everybody to vote yes on this.
Trustee Mason?
Nope, no questions.
Trustee Peterson?
I have no questions from you.
Trustee Luther?
No question.
Trustee Berman?
I agree with trustee Pierce.
Well.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero no, motion carries. I don't know, is, is Jim online? Does he have, if he? Jimmy, hi, how are you? Any administrators report you'd like to make?
I'd like to bring to the attention of the board, I, I sent an email about filling the finance director's position once vacated. So if there's any interest, you know, from the board to meet this person or to bring them in before the board, it technically will be an appointment as the village treasurer. So, you know, we, we could invite her to one of the next board meetings for trustees to meet her either before or after meeting, during the meeting, however you want to do it, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So if there's interest, please let me know, and we are just about to extend an offer to fill the communication specialist position. We did an interview process there as well, that's not an appointment. But just so you know, we have been working to, to fill that newly created position and shape that position. We feel we have a very strong candidate we'd like to make an offer to, and it's good timing with the, the passage of the, the marketing plan, this person, one of their responsibilities will be to implement the, the items in that plan, so. If there's anything more, please, please contact me on that, just, just so you know, we are, we're working on those positions. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Adam Clerk, any report? Any oral reports from trustees?
I have no, I have no report tonight, Your Honor, but I would request that the administrator resend that email about the treasurer's position, because I did not receive that. Or maybe I received it and missed it.
Okay, thank you. We'll make a note of that, we'll have Jim and Rachel resend it. Trustee Mason?
Yeah, I did not receive that email either.
We'll, we'll make sure that's reset.
So.
And, and the individual that, just so everybody here knows, that accepted the offer indicated that she didn't really not want her name to be public yet, because she was still working, we're still notifying her employer, just an FYI, okay? All right, trustee Peterson, any report? Trustee Luther?
I wasn't done.
Oh, sorry, 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 trustee Mason, go ahead.
So I'm gonna ask the administrator if he can, if Dennis is still on here, if he can go look at, I had a constituent Yole Grim Road, going around the corner, train was stopped, and there's, I know it's a state road, but we our family's out there, there's some shrubbery. Truck was going around just about, creamed about five cars. Corner, trees are growing around there, and you can't see coming on, on stop tra- traffic. So I don't know if Public Works can take a look at that. Second, I know we sent, just if we could publicize the letter we sent on the great job the state of Illinois did on Route one seventy-three, maybe letter out to the trustees too. That was sent, sent, I know the mayor sent the letter on that saying, great job, not being circled.
Yeah, that was more of a conversation with, with Joyce Mason was one of the people I spoke to, and I received a response from the state of Illinois. The response I received was that this is a, I'm gonna use, I keep wanting to say microblading, micrograding, micro-surfacing project, which is a newer technology that they're trying out, I know they did this on Depot Street, they've done it now on one seventy-three, I, I hate being the guinea pigs for new technology like this. If it is something that is a long ter, I told her if it's a long-term solution that they think like this is the way the road's gonna be redone long-term, it's not acceptable in the village's opinion. She is aware of it, she said she was gonna go and check that out. If it is only done that way because the state plans on expanding or widening one seventy-three, then I would understand why they would want to take this less costly, I guess, remedy to pave the road. So I do not have a hundred percent answer on that, but she has been working on that when we were talking about it, I think they were called down to emergency to vote on these lovely new maps.
Yeah, even, even on the roads with the lanes, if you have lane assist on your car, the way the lanes were, were painted down, it screws up your lane assist and it throws you in the other.
I'd have to, I'd have to ask Dennis how that's removed, if that's just something that's supposed to eventually be, you know, go away over time, or they have to physically remove it, but yeah, that's whoever put those down didn't have very good aim, so to speak, so I, I, I agree. One other thing on Public Works that I'll mention is we have had three large branches fall off the tree in front of Village Hall in the last three months, Jim, is that correct? Which is, in twenty years, it's never happened, so Dennis, they're gonna look at that, we talked to an arborist. I believe it's a rare tree, so the last thing they're gonna do is take the tree down, because it was a dedication, there's significance to it, but we also don't want it falling on the building, we are also aware that the flagpole was bent because of this latest branch. So Jim has instructed and Dennis, they have looked at either fixing that, and if it can't be repaired, we'd rather have it removed temporarily than have a bent flagpole standing in front of Village Hall, so. Anything else, trustee Mason on Public Works?
No.
Thank you. Trustee Peterson?
No.
Trustee Luther?
No.
Trustee Berman?
No.
Thank you. I don't believe there is any request for executive session, if there is, let us know now, otherwise I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Motion by trustee Luther?
Second.
Trustee Peterson, roll call, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting no, zero opposed, motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at seven thirty-three PM.